Good morning, everyone, and welcome to everybody present in the chamber and those listening online to this morning's Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee here at Lincolnshire County Council. I'm councillor Ian Carrington and I'm chairman of the committee. Councillor Martin Griggs, vice-chairman, is also in attendance. Now, the audiovisual feed for this formal public meeting is being broadcast live via the county council's website and all your comments will remain accessible online. Now, we don't have a fire drill planned for this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please leave the chamber, exit the building through the reception at that end of the chamber and assemble in the front car park for further instructions. And, as I had forgotten to do, please, your mobiles, laptops, iPads and all other devices should now be on silent. Requests to speak will be collated by the vice-chairman. Please indicate early when you wish to speak. That concludes the introductory comments, so we now move to the formal agenda. And item one, apologies for absence and replacement members. Our democratic services officer, Andrew Warnes, is attended. Andrew?
Good morning. We've just received apologies from councillor Linda Wooton. No further apologies. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Item two is declarations of members' interests. This is an opportunity for members to declare any pecuniary or other interests. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Looking around the chamber, I see councillor Mrs Austin. Councillor Mrs Austin?
Thank you, Chairman. Just for reference, my husband is a committee member of the Boston Woods Trust. He's not a trustee, just a committee member. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will note that. And if any member does think during the course of the meeting that they have an interest which becomes evident, just make yourself known. So we now move to item three, minutes of the previous meeting, which was held on the 10th of September 2024. This item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record, and you will find all of those details already circulated in pages five to 14 of the agenda pack. I'm not going to go through them page by page, but I will ask if any members have any points they wish to raise again. Councillor Mrs Austin?
Sorry, I'm not making a point of this. Although I had given apologies, I did attend via Teams or whichever it is. I think it was Teams, isn't it? Thank you.
It is indeed, and I'm sure that we can make a note on that. Any other comments or queries while subject to that correction which we can introduce? Do I have a proposer for the minutes? Proposed by the vice-chairman, seconded by councillor Fleetwood. All those in favour, please show. Thank you very much indeed. That is carried. That is carried. Those minutes are agreed as a correct record. I will sign them at the end of this meeting. Item four, chairmen's announcements and announcements by executive councillors and lead officers. I will simply say that as ever, we have a busy meeting ahead of us today, which includes consideration of two important pre-decision reports. So I would like to begin by asking those presenting reports, I should say, to take those as read by members and only summarise the key points and the kind of input expected of the committee. Introductions of reports will be kept at five minutes to ensure that we have sufficient time to consider and debate. So that's really all I have to say. I'll move on now to executive councillor announcements. Do we have announcements? I think we may well do, from councillor Colin Davy, executive councillor for economic development, environment and planning.
Good morning, Chairman, and good morning, members. I'm pleased to be able to share some highlights with you today from across the portfolio. We continue to respond strongly to consultations emerging from government, and I want to thank the committee for your input to the National Planning Policy Framework response that was submitted last month. This is a good example of the policy work that this council undertakes. We will continue to push our priorities nationally and locally, ensuring the best outcomes for Lincolnshire people and for all our businesses. At the South Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone near Hull Beach in South Holland, habitat sector investment continues to follow on from the councils, and the initiative's profile continues to grow nationally. The hub, the council's first innovation centre at the heart of the scheme, is now over 50% occupied by nine diverse businesses, despite being open for only just two years, and has two further applications in progress. Engagement work with the local community schools and businesses continues apace, with food science and engineering taste days, and business breakfasts hosted on-site, a well-attended community event in September, involvement in careers fairs and farmers' markets, and upcoming involvement in the UK FPM Festival of Agriculture, NFU and the FSB events. The South Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone website and social media pages are regularly updated and have good viewing figures. The NFU is including a case study in its magazine and large-scale signers who shortly to be elected. In East Lindsay, the Boston Road Industrial Estate Expansion Scheme in Horn Castle continues with pre-construction site operation works, with construction programmes starting January. The current estate is at capacity, and there is demonstrable local demand for further space. Across the county, we continue to support our small business tenant, which total around 145, in our five business centres, innovation centre, industrial and commercial units. Occupancy levels remain buoyant, with a healthy mix of lease renewals and new tenants. A programme of upgrading the electric vehicle charging points at seven business centres and other sites across the county was recently completed, and members may recall the varied media articles celebrating the new state-of-the-art installations. There's another great benefit for small businesses leasing offices at these centres. The Adult Skills and Family Learning Service launched a 24/25 programme on the 8th of September, in line with International Literacy Day, under the title of Kickstart Your Skills. The launch included social media activity, promotional work in the 14, the major libraries and initiatives such as Multiple Brick Building Battle. At the end of September, the service, alongside the council's Young People's Programme, Inspire You and in-house apprenticeship provision, received a full inspection by Ofsted. The full report will be published in November. Can I offer my thanks to our LCC teams, providers and tutors, for all the hard work, their care, their commitment and passion they put into developing and delivering our tripartile learning provision? The inspection was timed to showcase our great work and the impact it continues to have on our learners. Elsewhere, as a direct result of a media services inquiry received via new content on Visit Lincolnshire, as part of our ongoing commitment to attracting and facilitating productions in the county, through our Lincolnshire Film Office of Work, a major car brand has been filming content in the county, ready for an upcoming ad campaign, so watch this space. And I'm also aware of other live inquiries for filming to take place in the county in 2025. Visitlincolnshire.com continues to perform very strongly. We're already exceeding the amount of sessions we see through the entirety of 2023. August is our highest ever achieving month, with over 202,000 views since the site launch. Amongst a lot of new enhanced content on the site, there is now two sections on the England and Coast Path live on the site, and these are creating good traffic, and congratulations to the team on their clarity and ease of use. The Business Lincolnshire team have delivered a number of interesting business events recently. The Shield Lincoln Cyber Security Workshop was held at Mosaic on the 3rd of October. This empowered local businesses with the knowledge and tools needed to safeguard their digital assets, and included speakers from Lincolnshire Police, the National Crime Resilience Centre, and included case studies about genuine attacks, which explained how the breaches happened and what lessons could be learned from them. The ever-popular Successful Networking Workshop will run in Fleetford on the 17th of October, and to support the work on international trade, businesses Lincolnshire and Team Lincolnshire are hosting a joint internationalisation roundtable at Inver Park Air in Market Deeping on the 14th of November, which will focuses on challenges faced when trading globally. There are still fantastic opportunities for our manufacturing sector to gain access to bespoke support and grants through the Made Smarter East Midlands Programme. As an example, Hames Chocolates Limited, based in Skegness, who have been making chocolate since 2005, received a roadmap that highlighted the need for a data and system integration solution, and then was subsequently awarded a grant of £20,000 through the programme to support the growth of their business. So far in 2024, we have seen a healthy increase in foreign direct owned businesses investing across Greater Lincolnshire. The team are currently working on 16 live investment projects. Typically, these great projects include working with local advanced manufacturing businesses to apply digital technology to improve efficiency and creating skilled jobs. And finally, Chairman, the annual Team Lincolnshire Conference was held on the 1st through October. Over 100 ambassadors attended. It focused on social value, connected to tendering for business with case studies for ambassadors, an update on the inward investment inquiries, a leadership development session and networking opportunity. As you can see, Chairman, there's a lot going on in the portfolio, and I'll stop there and take any questions if members have them.
Thank you very much indeed, Colin, for that comprehensive report. I'm always impressed by the sheer scale and breadth of what this council does. It is something I've said in this committee before, and make no apologies for saying it, local government has an incredibly powerful opportunity to help the private sector grow, to help business, to help prosperity, and I think that report underlines the breadth and scale of what Lincolnshire County Council does in all parts of our county. I'm looking around the chamber. Does anybody have a point they wish to raise with councillor Davy or a question to put to councillor Davy? I am seeing none for the moment, in which case, Colin, thank you very much indeed for your report. I will now move on and ask, are there any announcements from senior officers present? Again, I'm looking around the room and seeing none. We may therefore now move on with thanks to our participants to the next item, which is item five on the agenda, which is the Tree and Woodland Planting Strategy 2024 to 2034. Now, as part of its pre-decision scrutiny function, the committee is presented with a report addressed to the executive on this matter, and the report can be found on pages 15 to 70 of the agenda pack. The council manages numerous trees across its own land, properties and along the highway network, and as part of the Green Master Plan, the council aims to increase tree coverage across the county. The report outlines the council's efforts to manage trees safely and introduce a new tree planting strategy for 2024 to 2034, designed to encourage and support residents and landowners in planting new trees across the county. And the actions before us this morning, we are invited, one, to consider the report and determine whether we should support the recommendations to the executive as set out, and, two, to agree any additional comments to be passed to the executive in relation to this item. The report will be presented by Chris Miller, head of environment. Chris, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the introduction to the report. As you've already mentioned, we'll take the report as read, if that's okay, but I will just run through the various pertinent points. You probably are aware that the county council has an ambition to plant or facilitate the planting of 750,000 trees, which is equivalent to approximately one per resident of Lincolnshire. Thus far, it's been slow progress. Admittedly, we've managed to plant about 170,000 specimens across the county or aid in that work up till now. However, following successful bidding into the Woodland Creation Accelerator Grant Fund, we've been able to secure extra resources to work on this programme. So as a consequence, we've produced our 10-year strategy to show how we will be seeking to achieve this target and how we will work with and support other partners. In doing so, we will be contributing to habitat creation towards the net zero greenhouse gas emissions target for 2050 and to improved air and water quality, with the basic mantra in choosing the right tree in the right place for the right reasons, bearing in mind soil conditions, water, the historic environment, the landscape in which it's set, biodiversity and the resilience to climate change. Lincolnshire itself has only got 4% tree coverage by comparison to the nationwide average of 13%, and that's predominantly down to agricultural practices and influence, but also natural characteristics such as the drained fenland or the wolds. Similarly, the county lost much of its hedgerow, important for connecting wooded areas and corridors for wildlife to link these. We've also suffered decreases in orchard areas, significantly due to the changes in farming practices and the intensification of arable land. Our strategy will aid in the reversal of this decline and will target areas of approaches that brings the broadest range of public benefits. The objectives of the scheme are laid out on page 31 of the report, and briefly, there are six: to promote the benefits of planting sustainable trees, orchards, hedgerows and woodlands, develop new and facilitate access to existing grant funding for tree planting, working in partnership with district and parish councils, government departments, charities, farmers and landowners and communities to increase suitable tree planting, to offer expert advice on tree and woodland planting, to promote and support development of woodland management plans to ensure woodland provides multifunctional benefits while remaining resilient to pressures on tree health, and to aid the delivery of biodiversity net gain schemes with guidance from the Greater Lincolnshire Local Nature Recovery Strategy. To deliver these objectives, we have started up the Linkwoods Project. This will seek opportunities for planting trees and hedges with the twin stream approach, firstly looking into utilising appropriate council-owned properties such as viable areas of county farms potentially, environmental land holdings where there might be opportunities amongst school land, office land, our business parks, and also those areas of land that are managed by our highways team, not necessarily related directly to the highway, but small pockets of land. We will also seek planting by representation into planning authorities where biodiversity net gain is required and also where we're managing our own street assets. The second stream is partnerships with others, including other local authorities, parish councils, Forest Commission, DEFRA Natural England. We'll also be working with organisations such as the Woodland Trust, the Lincolnshire Wildlife Trust and the Greater Lincolnshire Nature Partnership. We will seek to subsidise native planting schemes, working with parishes, voluntary groups, private landowners and farmers across the county, and also to provide advice and guidance on wider woodland creation and management, always seeking the most appropriate funding streams to do so. We've also secured extra funding for 30 community orchards to commemorate the coronation of King Charles III, and we'll be working with various community organisations to enable this work. Our partnership work will be vitally important and have already partnered with the Woodland Trust to act as agents for the More Woods and More Hedges Grant Schemes, and I'm pleased to be able to inform you that over the winter period, we are aiming for a further 100,000 trees over the period. That covers the strategy side of the report. You'll note that the second side of the report is about how we manage our trees. I'm not going to go into that too much detail, but that refers to our work managing the highway tree asset and how we look at those trees that might affect the carriageway, but also some of our work around ash dieback and what we're looking for there, and how we manage our property-related trees, which is just transferred into the environment team from property services to manage. So pending questions, Chairman, which hopefully Matthew or I will be able to answer, if not, we'll obviously take them away and come back to you councillors, but that will conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, Chris. I'll kick this one off and then I'll come to members. Just, you mentioned the overall strategy there. How does the proposed strategy set out in the report before us align with national objectives, particularly DEFRA's 25-year environment plan? And how realistic are the targets for increasing woodland cover by 2034? I'm thinking not least just the basic issue of the availability of land.
You've hit the nail on the head there, councillor Carrington. Yes, I mean, it obviously aligns with the environmental improvement plan, the government-led requirements that we're looking to contribute towards. There are challenges in Lincolnshire. We are not traditionally a treed county, as it were, as I mentioned in the report. We have areas of drained land which don't necessarily have that historic tree environment to it. We're also aware that we don't want to be creating greater impacts on our higher-grade agricultural land, so lots of land isn't going to be looked at for trees, something we're looking at with our own colleagues in looking after county farms, which are predominantly grade one, grade two. So we are perhaps only looking at pockets of land there, but hopefully through our partnerships with the likes of the Woodland Trust, we can help with those landowners with larger areas where they might want to give it over to woodland.
Thank you very much. Next, councillor Fleetwood.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm a bit of a tree hugger in that over the years, maybe 30 years ago, I planted thousands of trees on my own property at my own cost without grant aid, and I often look at, I don't own that property now, but I often look across towards the area, and what was previously just a flat environment is now very well grown. Lombardi poplars suddenly grow, willows, willows will spring out of absolutely anything. So yes, from that point of view, everything's excellent, but the point I'm making is that trees grow. And you say that you don't want to talk too much about maintenance, and I'm looking at page 59 with regard to highways trees, and I know that within, let's say, the boundaries of cherry willing, there are housing estates and there's cul-de-sacs, and within them there are roundabouts, and on the roundabouts, there's a lot of trees. Some of those trees get pruned by various lorries passing, but generally, the majority of the trees are there, and it's a devil of a job to try and keep them in order, whether it's down to the size of them or the leaf shedding at this time of the year that starts to pay havoc with regard to street cleansing. I just wonder quite what could be done as a bit of a maintenance programme to cover these environments, housing estates that are 30 to 50 years old and typically have what was previously just small trees on them, now have very large things that are dropping leaves everywhere, and we spent a whole day yesterday talking about drainage and drainage issues. Well, those leaves do disappear, they go into the drains, and the question then comes, does the drainage system actually work?
Thank you, councillor Fleetwood. Yeah, I mean, what you're talking to there is the work that the arboretum cultural officers do with our highways colleagues for the highway tree asset. We manage them predominantly for safety, naturally, but obviously where they may be causing extra concerns, there are areas we will still need to look at as well. The majority of trees lining the highway are probably in private ownership, so what we do with those, we're just making sure again that they're safe, then they're not going to cause problems to either pedestrians on the footway or carriageways alongside. So for example, the big scheme around ash dieback is looking for those specimen trees where they're going to cause a potential problem in the near future, advising landowners of that and that their liabilities toward that so that they can appropriately maintain them.
But if I can come back, it's specifically the trees that are located within the boundary of between the highway and the footway with regard to trees within these areas. It's the roundabouts where they are wholly in the hands of the county council, and it's what level of maintenance people can expect with regard to those.
You'll have to forgive me because I don't know the complete detail, because that forms part of the highways remit, there's under the highways asset management plan, get the words right, highways infrastructure asset management plan, and they do have a section on trees and how they manage those. Obviously, it's subject to the resources available, so safety will always be the predominant concern, and then tree management aesthetics is probably somewhere down the line.
Before I move to the next councillor, I just did want to pick up on that, because you mentioned working with local planning authorities, and the National Planning Policy Framework has a requirement in it with new developments to have beautiful tree-lined streets. Now, the incoming government has a raft of proposed changes, which includes removing the word beautiful, which I think is unfortunate, but they have kept in the bit about tree-lined streets. And I know that our highways team have a project which has just started, which we discussed at our last meeting, for a design guide for streets. Our Victorian forefathers were absolutely aware of the value of trees and streets, and right up really to the 70s, if we, as members, walk around our own patches, you find that trees were very much included, and then it all got put in the too difficult box, and that's really unfortunate. Trees absolutely contribute to the quality of life in urban areas or suburban areas, and they are one of nature's most brilliant air conditioning units as well. So I'm very pleased that the highways team are taking this seriously. And yeah, there are practical issues, there are costs involved, but certainly the work that's going to happen on the design guide, I think, will be very useful in helping to nail this down and making sure that we not only have trees, but we have the right trees in the right place and the right maintenance structure for them. Councillor Hague, you are next.
Thank you, Chairman. You beat me to the post, asking the first question about availability of land for tree planting and the difficulty in finding suitable areas. So I was going to go on to ask you, do we do any follow-up surveys of the planting that we've done to ensure that certain trees haven't died, and if they have, if they're replaced? And what sort, how often do we carry out a survey? Thank you.
Yeah, we would have, we got a Treescapes grant a couple of years ago, and so we've been back to those schemes, I think we've been back probably twice. So we do monitor the success rates, and then we will look at replanting up, often in our grant schemes where we do it, the applicants have to do replanting after perhaps year three. So we do monitor and we do replanting, but we kind of expect a few failures anyway, so we sort of build that into the design of the scheme.
Thank you very much. Next is councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chair. Just on the, I'll come on to that point first. So in terms of monitoring then, so how will the council sort of monitor and manage the risks of sort of disease like ash, you know, ash dieback?
So from the ash dieback perspective, you probably know that most of the trees in the hedgerows alongside highways are ash, and we know that ash dieback is beginning to obliterate them, quite frankly, and they are beginning to die at an alarming rate. Although we have found pockets of resilience, which is some good news, particularly up in the wolds, but we do regular inspections of those. They're on a routine cycle, and as I said earlier, where a tree is identified to be becoming a safety concern, the landowner is contacted to make sure they are aware, because ultimately it's their liability to make sure that tree remains safe and doesn't affect the highway going forward.
And then in terms of sort of the long-term impacts on land use, so obviously I think you elaborated in your report that, you know, Lincolnshire land is extensively for agricultural use. So how does the strategy account for potential conflicts between tree planting and food production? Are we planning to incentivise or support farmers in integrating that agroforestry practices to balance both?
Certainly. So you've hit the nail on the head. It's about balance, it's about making sure we utilise the areas of land which are going to be most, probably the best word, is productive in terms of its usage. Clearly, high-grade arable agricultural land isn't going to be somewhere where we're going to be flooding it with trees. We're not forcing people to plant trees, we're open to aiding and assisting those that are looking to do so as part of their own land holdings or as a community, so we're not saying we need you to plant trees in these particular locations. The target is an ambitious one, at 750,000 trees, and the land take is considerable, but only by working in partnership with landowners in particular are we going to be able to make headway into that. That's again why our work with the likes of the Forest Commission and the Woodland Trust, who already have ongoing schemes, is going to be really helpful in aiding that.
And then just final one, actually councillor Fleetwood asked the one about, that I was going to ask about in terms of securing that long-term funding for the maintenance of newly-planted trees, which obviously you've addressed. And then finally, in terms of climate resilience, so how, just if you could elaborate a bit more in terms of how the strategy is adapting to future climate conditions, particularly regarding the tree species selection, so are we going to have a mix of both native and non-native trees as part of this planting to sort of protect ourselves into the future?
That's exactly right. Native trees aren't necessarily as resilient to climate change as others, so it's about finding that balance and mix again. Whilst obviously we'd love to see the native species flourishing... Whilst, obviously, we'd love to see, you know, the native species flourishing, if they're not going to survive in the future climates, we're going to have to adapt to that part of the strategy. As I say, going back to that mantra of right tree in the right place for the right reason, it's all about following that, bearing in mind, you know, all those things that could be affected by climate, such as the soil health, such as the air and the climate, you know, that they are important factors in selection of species alongside, you know, the historic side of things about what would this landscape look? So, when you're in the wilds, you're looking for certain species in particular, it's protected landscapes, and we will obviously try and adhere to that wherever we can to make sure we retain that. But that's, as I say, you know, dependent on how climate change will affect an area, that's going to have an influence too.
And the Forestry Commission are doing some kind of ground baking work on this. And they've got some really good interactive web pages where you can put in where your land is and it will forecast what the climate conditions will be like. And you can select trees from, say, southern Europe or different areas. So, that does sort of future-proof it as well, which is quite an amazing bit of kit to look at. So, the Forestry Commission are really quite leading on this.
Interesting answers. Thank you very much for those. We move next to the vice-chairman, councillor Griggs.
I use this one today. Thank you very much. Councillor Fleetwood sort of covered it, but a couple of questions. So, what are the projected financial costs of maintaining newly-planted woodland? Because I'm not an expert in trees, but I'd imagine it's more expensive and arduous when they're first planted and taken root. And then how would ongoing maintenance of new woodland on our land be facilitated? I appreciate on private land, it's down to, I would expect it's down to the landholders. And then finally, I remember talking to councillor Richard Austin a few years ago about some of the difficulties getting access infrastructure for new areas of woodland. So, is there potentially a pot available that we could direct people towards to apply? Because what we don't want is private landowners going, yep, I'll put in the woodland, but there is no path and I can't get any money for it. And therefore the scheme's dead before it begins. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Griggs. I'll try and pick those up in, I'm going to go in reverse order to start with regarding the access element of it. So, obviously with one of my other hats on, looking at access to the countryside, access to woodland is one of the, you know, key favourite things that people would like out of their access. We're always open to conversations with occupiers where they want to improve public access. Ideally, we're looking at to be on a permanent and public basis rather than permissive because permissive can here today, gone tomorrow, as we found with stewardship schemes in the past with land managers. But we're always open to that because we are looking to increase, you know, that opportunity for access. In terms of the funding for maintenance, that is something that we're conscious of. You know, when we're applying for grants, we have to make sure that forward-looking, again, selecting the right tree, the right place, making sure you select a tree that's probably going to have less need for maintenance going forward, depending on the location you're looking at, for example. And forgive me, the third question, I've run out of steam in my head.
It was to do with the cost of initial maintenance when planting?
Right, okay. I mean, that's covered out of the grant schemes that we have. As Matthew said, we do go back, we go and check the sites. We account for a number that we are expecting will fail because not every tree will survive the planting, you know, through a winter season potentially. But then after a period, then we would look for the private owner to do that. And our own land, that would be our responsibility to make sure that tree remains, inasmuch as we already have that for those trees in property that we already hold, we already manage that. And that was part of the second part of the report.
Thank you very much. We now move on to councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some questions have been covered, so I shall keep it brief. As we've heard, very ambitious project here. I do support this. It's clearly gone through the details and great hear words such as partnership and listen to experts on this because we do need to obtain advice when it comes to this. And this does need to be a positive piece of work. We need to iron out any potential negatives and answer those questions at this stage. As I was going to ask about maintenance, that has been covered and also the conflict. We do need to gain that advice because we have a report on this meeting today regarding supporting agriculture. As we know, certain, the location, the right place, the right tree, as we've heard, because we know certain birds can create damage to crops, so we need to avoid any negative here. Regarding, just a question now, are we keeping records and data of any planting by private individuals? We've heard councillor Fleetwood planted many trees in the past. So, if there's an individual with a large-scale planting plan or a developer, are we keeping records? And is that, or have we historically, and are we doing that going forward? Thank you.
Yeah, we, well, we keep GIS records of all the plantings that we do. I think we have got them going back. We've obviously, as a county council, been planting for, well, probably the last 50 years. So, we've got quite detailed records of the schemes that we do. And we do, if we do grants to landowners, then we put in there a set period that they have to be responsible for maintaining the trees for. So, yeah, we do keep records.
Thank you very much for that. We now move on to councillor Mrs. Austin.
Thank you, chairman. Well, the previous comments and the report have led on to various things which I have noted here. First of all, well, Chris, it was your statement that you work in partnership with people like the Woodland Trust. Is there any reason why you've never worked, for instance, with a charitable trust like Boston Woods Trust, which for the uninitiated in the room, I'm informed has planted about 15,000 trees in the last 20 years around Boston, which was a very, with an area where there weren't trees. And I think they're eager to plant more. And I suppose I should declare an interest because on a very, very cold wet day at the end of November, I think it was 1999, I helped plant trees. So, that's my first question. Is there any reason, do you think you should, could work more with that particular organisation? Is there any opportunity for that? And then, well, I'll answer that, I'll ask that one and then I'll go on to my second one, which is about obtaining land. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we have worked quite a lot with Boston Woods Trust. I think another grant scheme that we offer is the Community Wildlife Grant. And I know for a fact that we've, we have been working with the Boston Woods Trust. And I think we were trying to work with them last year to do a hedge planting scheme. But I think it didn't quite work out for some logistical reasons. But we quite regularly work with the Boston Wood Trust.
Right, thank you. Well, obviously in the room, there is a member of the committee, so he'll probably talk to you afterwards. Now, you've got your ambition of planting 75,000, if I got the right number, trees. Is really one of the biggest challenges, the acquisition of land? And if so, is there any possibility of getting, rather than a developer planting a tree here and a tree there on the nice tree-lined roads, which then in an estate just aren't necessarily appreciated? Is there anything, anything to say that they couldn't be asked to give a sum of money for appropriate land to be purchased by LCC elsewhere? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think so, yeah. And just to clarify, it's 750,000 trees. So, yeah, still quite an ambitious target, to say the least. And yes, as we've already discussed, the land element of that, the land required, I did have the figures, I'm afraid I haven't got them to my fingertips, about just how many football pitches that looks like in terms of the number of hectares. It's quite a considerable amount, which would perhaps give it better context. But it's, it's always going to be a problem if we don't have the land to plant on ourselves because then that's why we're relying on others, on community groups, on other local landowners. And again, those partnerships with the Forestry Commission, for example, who will have their own planting schemes already, you know, building that into the mix as well, partnering with them and the Woodland Trust and the Boston Woodland Trust too, to increase those numbers. In terms of the development-led parties, it's something definitely to explore, is how can we facilitate greater numbers of planting through the development and planning processes? Obviously, now that planning is subject to biodiversity net gain, that does give opportunity for planting and for more planting than we've seen in the past. And those are the discussions we have with the local planning authorities already and will do in the future. But then looking again at our local nature recovery strategy, which is in preparation, which will come towards this committee in due course, it's not quite ready for that stage yet. But again, that will be looking at how we can improve nature and for that, you know, the things that accommodate and facilitate nature recovery, which includes obviously heddlands and woodlands. So, yeah, we will always be keeping an eye on wherever we can get those benefits.
Before I move on, just to reiterate, excuse me, before I move on, just to reiterate, from a professional point of view, I have an involvement in planning and the potential which is offered by biodiversity net gain should not be underestimated. Equally, the nightmarish complexity of its administration, it's one of those things which is devoutly to be wished, but is incredibly difficult for us all in the planning world to get our heads around. But we are doing that. And most developments, because the target has been set at 10% biodiversity net gain, very few developments are able to actually deliver that on-site. So, you are looking at a situation where credits are bought for off-site provision. And I'm sure that, particularly bearing in mind the overarching nature recovery strategy, I'm sure our offices, as we've heard, are already in contact with local planning authorities. That is something where the local planning authorities can help. But I have to say, as a working planner myself, I kind of need help with that because we're all looking at a system which is very, very new, which has not been desperately well-thought-out by those who actually put together the detailed nuts and bolts. But I'm sure there are great opportunities here which we can exploit. The key thing is to make sure that that provision is as close as possible to the site of the development itself. And that's sometimes quite challenging. Before I move on, councillor Cook, I think you wanted to come back on this one.
Thank you. It was just because we were talking about partnerships. And obviously, we've got, you know, in Lincolnshire, we sort of benefit in many ways by the fact that a lot of the land across the county is owned by certain family estates. But also, we mustn't forget that actually, as a county council, I think we are one of the largest landowners in the county. So, how are we, forgive me if I've missed this point in the report, how are we engaging and actually developing our own land in terms of county farms as part of these proposals?
We speak regularly with our county farm partners through my section across many areas, woodland, nature recovery, but also, you know, the, the energy agenda for solar and so on. So, yeah, we have really good contacts with our property colleagues. It's a piece of work still yet to be done in terms of what land may be potentially available because ultimately these are tenanted farms. So, you know, we have to bear in mind the tenants' requirements too. And as I said earlier in the piece, we know that they're usually high-grade, I mean, which is why the council's invested in that land. So, you know, it's not going to be replacing agricultural food production where that's still the most viable and best use of that land. And again, it's coming back to finding that balance between the different agendas for the county property estate across all its forms, whether it be county farms or the school estates or, you know, the other pockets of land that we own, the work that we already do with land that's sort of vested with my area, within the environment. We're already looking at those pockets to see, you know, where we can perhaps do some planting. And those are some of the areas that Matt and his team have already been planting up over the past sort of few years, really.
And finally on my list, councillor Murray.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to welcome this report. It's very refreshing, particularly at the moment because people are really concerned about flooding and a repeat of the flooding that we've had in recent months. And we all know that trees are really good for holding water and all the other things we know about is contained in the report. And I'm sure if people are represented, we'd be very happy to see the council implement the report.
Well, I think the fact that almost every member of the committee has wanted to raise the point, raise a point or ask a question underlines how welcome this report is and also how seriously members take this issue. I was just reminded of the view from a plane window by your comment, Chris, when you said that 13%, I think, of the United Kingdom is covered in trees. And I've been flying over Germany, both going there on business and coming to and fro on holiday for many years. And I actually flew over it on Sunday and I looked out of the plane window. And you can always tell when you're over Germany because there are little pockets of woodland. I'm not talking about the Black Forest or great big famous forest like that, but small pockets. And they have a very vibrant and very successful agricultural industry, as we do here in Lincolnshire. And yet they manage to have far more woodland. And I've just looked up while we were speaking, what is the tree cover of Germany? And it is 31.8% according to the United Nations. And yet they combine that with a very viable and very successful agricultural industry. It would be interesting to know how they manage to do that and whether are there any lessons for us. But I certainly think that the report that's before us this morning is for a whole raft of reasons, economic as well as environmental, very, very important indeed. So, there being no further speakers, we have a suggested proposal. I move that the board supports the recommendations of the executive as detailed on page 17. And I ask that our comments, as captured by our scrutiny officer, are shared with the executive ahead of its consideration timeline. Do I have a second, the vice-chairman? Thank you very much. We will now vote. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? That is unanimous and is carried. And thank you very much indeed to the whole team for the work which has gone into preparing the report and is ongoing. So, we now move to item six on the agenda, which is approval to procure a contract for the bulk haulage of residual waste, for reasons which we'll come into, something very close to my own heart. This is a pre-decision item. The report can be found on pages 71 to 78 of the Agenda Pack. The council's bulk haulage of residual waste contract ends on the 31st of March 2025. This report outlines the proposed procurement of a new contract, including delegation of key decisions. The scope has been revised based on the data from the current contract with a focus on using primary roads for all travel. And I stress that point. The actions before us this morning are, one, to consider the report and determine whether we support the recommendations to the executive. And two, to agree that any additional comments are passed on to the executive in relation to this item. And the report will be presented by Leanne Fotherby, Commercial Procurement Manager, and Rachel Stamp, Waste Partnership Projects Manager. So, Leanne and Rachel, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said earlier, I take the report as being read by members. The contract here is relating, as you quite rightly say, to the bulk haulage of our residual waste material from the county's waste transfer stations through to the Energy from Waste Facility. As the disposal authority, we have a statutory duty under the Environment Act to dispose of the waste material. Currently, residual waste volumes are increasing year on year, and it's anticipated that this will continue to increase even with the removal of food waste and soft plastics, which are expected to be collected separately during the lifetime of the new contract as a result of the changing simpler recycling legislation. The current contract for bulk haulage expires on the 31st of March 2025, and the current supplier is bulk freight limited. We are intending to use an open competitive tender route as there are limited suppliers in the market who specialise in the haulage of residual waste and operate within Lincolnshire. Many of the suppliers are smaller suppliers, but they have indicated at pre-market engagement they'll be able to fulfil the contract with a relatively short mobilisation period required of, we think, around three to five months. The contract length proposed is five years with a further two 12-month options to extend up to a maximum term of seven years. In pre-market engagement, a longer-term contract was preferred by all those who responded. The payment mechanism will include indexation on the mileage element on a monthly basis, which will ensure that the mileage costs are reflective of any changes in fuel prices, reducing the likelihood of suppliers building an additional risk into their price. The quality element of the tender process will focus on how bidders will ensure service delivery targets are met, along with the operational management of staff and vehicles and business continuity arrangements. Suppliers did express concern during pre-market engagement regarding delays to turnaround times at the Energy from Waste Facility. And this has been addressed through the contract with our suppliers there and realistic turnaround times included within this contract. Performance will be managed throughout the contract with service credits applied if performance does fail below the targeted levels. These levels will include... levels will include adherence to collection plans and routes. And with regard to routes, we've taken account of feedback received during the lifecycle of the current contract. And the revised specification reflects the need for all potential suppliers to use principal A roads wherever possible and all routes to be agreed ahead of contract commencement. Will, of course, need to exercise flexibility in exceptional circumstances, if you road closures and roadworks. The performance measures have been developed to ensure that the waste transfer stations stay within their permitted capacity, remain operational, and that we can effectively discharge our statutory duties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to kick this one off and then we'll move to members. I can see councillor Fleetwood's already indicated. I just want to pick up something which, in transparency, members, I have discussed with officers before this item came before you, and that is the question of routing. We are a large county. We cover an awful lot of real estate. And that means as the Waste Disposal Authority, we have various routes that cross the county to avoid landfill getting waste to the Energy From Waste plant. Historically, that has meant that some contractors have been sending heavy lorries through our small villages. And I've been very, very keen to try and make sure that does not happen again. I was therefore very pleased to see the reassurances about that in the report. But can I just establish for the record that, other than issues of roadworks or whatever, we will simply not accept that practice continuing and that people will have to get on to the nearest A-road, trunk road, and then stay on that A-road, trunk road network throughout? Because I'm sure that there will be instances where a contractor will talk about viability or other issues of that sort and try and wriggle. And we're talking about a number of years of this contract. So may I have that assurance, and may all our residents in rural areas have that assurance, that any individual routing will be evaluated and enforced on that basis?
Thank you, chairman. The simple answer is yes. We've been very clear in the specification that we require contractors to use the principal road network and primarily A-roads, submit those to us, and we will be monitoring and enforcing those as part of the contract.
That is very good news, which I will relay to some residents of mine who are very concerned about this. And I'm sure that other members also have similar concerns. Councillor Fleetwood.
I've got two points. The first one is, under the current arrangement, the waste transfer stations in Lincolnshire, and I've used several of them, are immaculate. If you go to the Energy From Waste plant down on Wisby Road, around there, it's immaculate. We are not depositing waste anywhere between the two locations. And as far as I can see, there's nothing coming out of the trucks on the way. So I think we really should congratulate the current operator and also those involved in the schemes, whether it's the guys on the sites that are doing an excellent job of cleaning up around them. If there is anything windblown or not, I don't know. But we should really say thank you to the people that are currently involved in the system. That's point number one. Point number two is, if you've seen breakfast BBC this morning, there is a BBC feature coming up about Energy From Waste and emissions coming from them and bits and pieces around it. So hence the reason why I make the comment. In some plants, they highlighted one plant in Sunderland, where they were taking waste from Liverpool. So are we actually importing any waste from anywhere else? And is it just for our operators? And as far as the movement of waste goes, I wholeheartedly support the report as written. I think they're doing an excellent job. And I think if the contractors are doing a good job, that must mean that our employees are doing a very good job monitoring what they are under contract to do for us.
Thank you, councillor Fleetwood. And I'll certainly take those comments and thanks back to the team. I think it's evident in terms of our safe operating practices, all our waste is tipped inside the waste transfer station halls. Anything that does blow outside while the doors are open, the site staff there do go around and daily litter pick those. And in the same way, as part of the specification, all the vehicles have to be appropriately sheeted so that they're not getting litter coming out from the wind, picking it up from the vehicles on the way into the Energy From Waste, again tipped inside the transfer station hall there as well. So it's very contained and very measured. In terms of your second point around the article that I think we've all seen this morning on the BBC, our Energy From Waste facility at North High Caters for waste from Lincolnshire residents. So at the moment, the capacity from that is being taken by the volume of waste that we are having to dispose of from across the county. Where there are very small amounts of capacity through the year, and it is a very small amount and minimal, that again is by our contractors brought in potentially from some commercial providers. But again, with adherence to trying to ensure that that is from within Lincolnshire, we definitely don't import from around the county. A, we don't have the capacity. And B, I think because of Lincolnshire being as large as it is geographically, there is more than enough supply within county.
We'll come back to that one. We have councillor Griggs and councillor Bowles waiting. And then I think on the issue of the BBC report, we'll come back to that at the end. Councillor Griggs.
Thank you very much. So the report talks about a change in system from price per tonne to price per load. It also talks about the fact we maximise payloads to the capacity of the vehicles. That being said, what safeguards are in place to ensure that the new contract maintains cost efficiency as we transition across the different systems? And is there also safeguards built in? You mentioned we're expecting waste to increase over the life of the contract. I'll assume that's built in. Can you just guide us through how that's built into the contract? Thanks.
So in terms of the actual pay mechanism, I'm going to let Leanne handle that one. In terms of the forecasting, yes. In terms of the forecasting of weight and tonnage and those increases, we've built that into the lifecycle of the contract in terms of the specification that we're putting out.
And in terms of the payment, it's more in line with our other haulage contracts as well, is how the industry now prices for haulage of waste, basically. So that's why we changed it. There's also a payment mechanism, so we will be reviewing the payment element. The payment for fuel will be done monthly to make sure that we actually benefit from any drops in fuel prices, but also so that suppliers don't build in risk when they're pricing. So when the fuel increases, they actually get the cost of that as well. But also so we benefit when it does fall because it does fluctuate from a monthly basis.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bowles.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, my first point was, and councillor Fleetwood beat me to it, I've got a waste transfer site in my area, and they are really well looked after. And it's pleasing to hear that the little bit of grottyness, I did identify, Chris has already told me this morning, has been cleaned up today. So that's good to hear. My second point relates to the news article. I confess, I've not read it. I've only seen the headlines. But my question in relation to that is the term of the contract. If we're entering into a long-term, potentially seven-year contract, will there be built-in break clauses? So if there are issues, potentially given this article in this arena of doing things, we're not going to be lumbered with a long-term contract that we're not able to make full use of at some point in the distant future. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, there are break clauses within the contract. It's a three-month break clause, which is standard LCC break clause that we have in most contracts. We also are very aware within this contract that potentially there will be different changes in legislation as well that we need to accommodate for. So that's also being accommodated within the contract as well to make sure it remains as flexible as possible during the seven years.
Yeah, I have read the article on the BBC website. And I heard a headline on Radio 4, which said that Energy From Waste, it actually said incineration, is dirtier than coal. And I think the headline on the article on the BBC website, they changed these things. At the time that I saw it, it was burning rubbish, now UK's dirtiest form of power. It seemed to me that when I read through the article, and I read through it several times, that, I'm not saying it was designed to generate a headline, but there were certain key factors that weren't really included in it. Firstly, the issue of scale. The article acknowledged that at the moment, just over 3% of the United Kingdom's power is generated by Energy From Waste, and makes the comparison with that being dirtier than coal. We don't use coal anymore. I think within the last 10 days, the final coal plant, which was near to us on the Trent, closed down. But if you go about 30 or 40 years, 80% of the power in this country was generated by coal. So the actual mass of pollutants coming out is not comparable. The other thing the article did not do, which I think was sad, was address the issue of what are the alternatives? And I'm sure they would say, well, we're journalists and we've got a story to tell. And that's fine. But if you're saying that doing Energy From Waste is wrong, what is the alternative? One alternative is you actually go back to landfill, which we've been trying to move away from desperately. And in this county, we are superb at doing with one tenth of 1% going to landfill. If you put all this stuff into landfill, you're then generating enormous quantities of methane, which is an even more serious greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. You're also putting into the soil vast quantities of plastic, which will slowly corrode into microplastics, which will then get into the water system and the environment. It also didn't mention in any detail the Environment Act, which was passed by the last government, and the new government haven't said they're going to overturn it, which included the mandatory collection of food waste. And we've already got our plans, excuse me, laid in this county of how we're going to deal with that, both in collection with our district colleagues and ourselves as the disposal authority. And that will be a much greener way than burning it. And it also didn't mention that the Environment Act mandates the collection of soft plastics. And the article talks at length about the horror of plastic. But it didn't mention the fact that the Environment Act passed by the last government mandates, I think I'm right in saying in 2027, the collection of soft plastics. And there is a whole emerging industry, and I'm aware of things I'm not going to talk about here, which are relevant to this county, for taking soft plastics and recycling them into alternatives for oil without actually using new fossil resources. So I read it, and it was an interesting, this is all wrong, kind of story. I was saddened by the fact that it didn't seem to have a discussion in particular of, well, if we don't do this, what are the alternatives? And I just wondered whether you'd like to comment on those? Because if we don't continue with Energy From Waste, and this committee visited the plant very recently, and we know, for example, all the gases that come out are very, very carefully scrubbed, everything is cleaned, there is no immediate environmental impact on air quality or anything like that or smells. If we don't actually use this, what are the alternatives? And just how bad would they be?
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, I think a lot of the things you said are exactly, exactly right. So the Energy From Waste is our best available technology to use at the minute. We get 180,000 to 190,000 tonnes of residual waste that can't be recycled. The only alternative at this stage is landfill. So we use the Waste Hierarchy. It's an internationally recognised system for the best practice of managing waste. And energy recovery, which is the Energy From Waste, is above landfill. So that is the best technology available for us to use. And we've used that really successfully in diverting a lot of our waste from landfill, which, as you said, could end up in the ground for thousands of years. But as you say, there's a lot of legislation changes on the horizon. We're working with our existing contractors and looking at the soft plastics. We've identified there's about 18,000 to 20,000 tonnes of that in our mix at the minute. So we're looking at how we can remove that and remove that liability from our Energy From Waste in the future. We have got our food waste plan, and that is another sort of 30,000 tonnes we've identified to remove from that. But there's other incentives and initiatives as well. So there's the extended producer responsibility. So that is incentivising producers, because ultimately, we have to deal with what producers make and then put in our residual stream. And then we have to pick up the tab and the costs for that. So that is an incentive to actually make the producers try to make their packaging either smaller or more recyclable and divert that waste stream. So that is coming in the next sort of couple of years. And then we've got other things that we are doing as a council as well. So you might have seen, we just opened our new reuse shop at Tattersall. That's been really successful over the past four weeks. And that's something as we want to promote waste minimisation and reuse. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Chris. I think the bottom line is, there is never enough recycling. We've got a national issue at the moment, that we aren't quite making 50% recycling. And that is not just in this county, that is absolutely across the country. And yet, we know that people are very keen to recycle. And the important thing, and we've heard a reference from Rachel and from Leanne to it, is the waste hierarchy. That actually tells us very, very clearly what the right route is. And these are difficult choices, but always we seek, in this county certainly, for the route of least damage and the most environmentally friendly. Does any other member have any comment to make on the report we've heard or the discussion about the Energy From Waste? Right, in that case, thank you for your questions, your comments, and to officers, both for the report and for your answers. We have a proposal before us, which is this. I move that the board supports the recommendation to the executive as detailed on page 73 of the report. And secondly, I ask that our comments, as they have been captured by the scrutiny officer, are shared with the executive ahead of its consideration timeline. Do I have a second, the vice chairman? We will now take the vote. All those in favour, please show. I think that's unanimous. But for the record, any abstentions, any against? Indeed, that is unanimous. That is therefore agreed. We now move to item seven on the agenda, which is the Town Centre Improvement Scrutiny Panel A Monitoring Update of Action Plan. This next report can be found on pages 79 to 94 of the Agenda Pack. And the report provides an update on progress against Town Centre Improvement Action Plan approved by the committee in January 2024. The action plan follows recommendations from Scrutiny Panel A, which was submitted to the executive on the 3rd of October 2023. This update outlined in Appendix A reviews progress made on those recommendations. And the actions before us this morning are to consider and comment on the contents of this report. The report will be presented by Vanessa Strange, Head of Infrastructure Investment, and Mandy Ram, Funding and Investment Manager. Vanessa and Mandy, over to you.
Thank you, chairman. As you laid out, this is six months of activity undertaken since April. So that's what I want to focus on. I'm sure members will recall in September last year, the huge report that we presented and the extensive work of Scrutiny Panel A. It was very robust. And that resulted in the six recommendations around which the action plan was built. Acknowledging that town centre decline has been experienced throughout the country, the panel wanted to ensure that the county council could add greatest value and impact on Lincolnshire's town centres, leveraging both its own services and adding value where needed across the work of other town centre players and influencers. And indeed, there has been lots and lots of activity in the last six months, both emanating directly from the county council, including pilots in town centre business support and visitor economy, and from other key town centre stakeholders, including large-scale activity supported by central government through such investment as UK Shared Prosperity Fund and town deal activity. Every effort is being made continuously to ensure enhancement and complementarity of everything that's been initiated. The report sets out the main achievements and progress against each action plan recommendation. Obviously, taking the report as read, I'll just look at some of the brief highlights by recommendation. So Recommendation 1: Leadership and Policy. The work of Scrutiny Panel A highlighted the overriding needs of town centres to support a case for devolution capital investment. That's something that was the £20 million or so that was given to us through the devolution deal. We've been able to focus on Grantham, as well as spin-off town centre benefits from transport investment and Old Roman Bank Road on the coast, improving the offer and attractive pull of the coast and addressing accessibility to and between towns to help broaden summer season and to drive visitor numbers to those town centres. Meanwhile, part of the Trans Middle and Trade Corridor project was to support traffic flows within Lincoln and to enable residents to access town centre services. within Lincoln and to enable residents to access town centre services, jobs, training, et cetera, and retail, and for the visitors themselves to be able to better access visitor attractions and venues. In terms of Recommendation two, business support, it's been very focused activity on town centre businesses, something that the panel highlighted was potentially a problem. So what's been kind of focused on is the content of the support, and most importantly, the way it was offered. Responding directly to the panel's feedback, many business owners cannot attend the sessions during the day or give long-term commitment. So the report mentions bite-sized and flexible activity that small independent retailers can access at their convenience and can access and dip into case studies and information and inspiring kind of ways to support their businesses. Recommendation three, place-making funding and skills specifically references skills programme offer with seventy courses targeted specifically to retail and hospitality sectors. There's lots more that can be done, and that's a good start to this kind of initiative. Recommendation five, digitisation. Progress is focused on digitising the High Street. And in partnership with the University of Lincoln, the council has launched the Hidden Histories Virtual Immersive Environment App in Mabelthorpe. This is targeted at both local residents and visitors and uses some of the material collected and created by the county council's Historic Environment Team. It was launched at the Sooth Festival in the summer, and it's been very well received as of the collectible postcards promoting awareness and take-up. Downloads are in the hundreds, we'd like that to be more. So there's lots more activity to take place to drive awareness of the app in the October half term and through to relaunching in the summer of 2025. After that, it'll be reviewed and hopefully adapted to use elsewhere. Recommendation six was around green growth. We've looked at the relaunch of the rebranded Green Hospitality Toolkit, a renewed emphasis on promoting and showcasing market towns as visitor destinations, and in particular their retail offers. We've looked at the local cycling and walking investment plans. They are now all in place for all of the transport board towns, each of which indicates opportunities to improve cycle routes and cycling infrastructure in those towns, and that will be a next area of focus. You'll note that I've missed out Recommendation four, but as noted in the report, that's about evidence-based decision-making, and it's taken as read that that goes throughout all of the other recommendations. In summary, we've prioritised to get the best bang for our buck. We've been as agile as we can with responses and resources working across multiple services. We have worked with businesses to understand what they need and coordinated efforts with other town centre stakeholders, and we've got to set up a good pace against the improved action plan. Further, in engaging more intensively, we've been able to, with this work, the council's been able to support policy responses and calls for information, which in turn will bring local need and context to support change in town centres in recognition that not one size fits all. There's still a lot to do, but the work to date has put us in a very strong position to identify and capitalise on future opportunities, albeit in a challenging fiscal environment. We'll build on the pace over the next twelve months and report back to committee accordingly.
Thank you very much. Indeed, it just underlines, doesn't it, the thought that I had, having listened to councillor Davies' report to the committee at the beginning of our meeting? This is another example of the breadth and depth of the activity of this council in assisting business, assisting prosperity and assisting economic growth. Members, I have councillor Taylor, who's indicated first.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I agree with your last comments regarding what this council can do to assist economic growth and our town centres. Thank you for the officer for this report. I do welcome this update. Just two brief questions, please. Page eighty refers to October twenty-three, long-term investment for fifty-five towns announced under the last government benefited locally, Boston, Sydney and Spalding, that twenty million pounds over ten years. And I understand the town boards have been established. I've also heard a concern this money is not actually committed by this present government, and the budget this month may confirm that. Is that the officer's understanding? That's the first question. And second one, yeah, I welcome the app for Mabelthorpe, seems very successful. That's great to see that up and running. And the comment there was the Whole Beach app is in development. So any data on that development, please? Thank you.
In terms of what's forthcoming in the budget, I can really comment. I think the kind of benefit to take from that is to suggest that we've been in a position to work with the district councils involved and to try and support their strategy for long-term kind of activity. How that's funded, obviously, we'd have to look at in due course, but it's taken that long-term view and being evidence-led and being kind of holistic in our combined approaches to support those towns. And that obviously goes into every other town as well. In terms of Whole Beach app, we hope to work again with South Holland District Council. That has a different approach to the Hidden Histories app. It's much more a business directory approach, and we need that intelligence on the ground to try and pull that together. We deliberately, because this approach was a pilot, took two different approaches. One, business-generated, owned and updated, and the other one was a lot more around the training, engagement with the kind of local community, et cetera, as well as the visitors. In terms of the business directory one, we're still looking to support that, but it may be next year before that comes out.
Chairman, can I just comment on that? Yes, thank you for the Whole Beach update. Look forward to that being fully up and running. Just regarding long-term plans for town funding, it does seem a concern that that twenty million pounds is not yet guaranteed for those towns. We know those towns were making plans to invest and spend that money to invest in their town centres, so that is a concern. We do need to answer that question, because whilst there is some uncertainty that we do need to have doubt with as soon as we can. Thank you.
Yes, we shall have to wait and see, but I think you're absolutely right, councillor Taylor. The Towns Fund and other levelling up monies, to just give it a catchall, have been enormously important, particularly in the eastern side of the county. And national government, under the last government, pumped a very great deal of money, a very great deal was made available. There are some absolutely transformative projects which are now in train, and we very much hope will go ahead, because they are exactly the kind of thing which I think the last government and hopefully the new government want to see, which is economic and social regeneration. And certainly, there are places in the east of the county that are particularly in need of that. And I know some of the projects in an area where I work are very exciting indeed, and they're very, very important that they go ahead. Councillor Griggs.
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of questions. What have been the key challenges and barriers to implementing the Town Centre Improvement Action Plan, sorry, and how have they been addressed so far? And then just something, oh, I've changed tabs, there we go, something slightly more specific to Recommendation one when talking about engaging with the local transport boards and expanding the attendance of those. How are we communicating that with members of the public who we want to attend? Because I think historically, every element of government, be it national, right down to parish councils, struggle to engage with local populations to a level we're happy with. What steps are we taking to ensure we are engaging to the level that we would expect? Thank you.
I think in terms of the key barriers, it's been access to finance and capacity constraints. So I think indicating in the report, we did bring short-term resource in, and unfortunately, they didn't last quite as long as we would like. They got on the permanent job elsewhere, which was testament to the good work that they did in the meantime. We will be looking at that in due course, because leaping to your second question about the local transport boards, that's something that we want to take forward in the next six to twelve months, to look at the best way to engage with that kind of broad range of people and the communities, businesses, et cetera. So looking at addressing that capacity and then taking us into that area, because it's critical when we start to engage with those kind of bodies, that we have the impetus and the ability to kind of build that head of steam and maintain it. So when we get to that point, hopefully in the next couple of months, we will be able to address that.
Thank you very much. Next is councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chairman. So obviously, you know, we've got an evolving retail landscape at present. Obviously, we're still post-pandemic recovery. So how adaptable is this action plan? And then what specific contingencies are in place if economic conditions worsen or if the needs of the town centres was to change? Which is my first question.
I think it's all been created so that it can be reviewed as appropriate when we need to. So as you say, if conditions worsen, then we will take a review of the products that we're kind of looking to deliver. It's definitely something that recognises that each of the town centres have varying needs, and we want to build on that. So I think, taking your point, things, you know, they haven't recovered since the pandemic. It is a macroeconomic issue as well as something that we're now trying to address locally. So it's just, I think the point is to be agile and adaptive within the action plan to respond to that and to make sure that things are delivering what we wanted them to do in the first place.
My final comment was, and for those of us that work in development and work in the private sector, obviously, we talk a lot now about social impact. So beyond the economic factors, how will the social impact of the town centre improvements, such as benefits to local communities, reduction of inequality, improvements in public wellbeing, how will they be measured and incorporated into future reports?
I think absolutely, I think that's implicit to everything that we're doing. So in terms of the regeneration takes into account community uses, how we can diversify the use of the kind of town centres, et cetera. So it's absolutely the heart of all of that, you know, kind of that Recommendation four that alluded to, that evidence-based, being led by the evidence, making sure that we are adjusting everything that we do to accommodate the community that we serve with the town centres. I think it's something that we can pick up certain elements. I spoke about the capital devolution bits. Within that, we're looking to monitor and evaluate the impact of those schemes particularly with a social outcome, almost the social value aspects of it. So we're trying to do that as a bit innovative approach to how we kind of deliver and measure the success of our business cases. And that will then, from the lessons and learnings from that, will hopefully spill out into some of our other activities.
Thank you very much. I'm looking around. Councillor Fleetwood.
Yes, I'd like to thank Mandy for a well-researched and written report. And from what I've heard so far, everything is going exceedingly well, and it's positive. Whilst this is a pilot situation, I'm looking forward to the next tranche. And being a dual-hatter, I'm also a West Lindsay councillor, and I see on page eighty-four, there's the word Gainsborough there. So I'm just wondering, what sort of time period will this be rolled forward and look after the areas of Gainsborough and other areas in West Lindsay? Market racing, another typical example.
I can't commit to a specific kind of month or date, et cetera, but it's certainly a key priority to look at this now. We've got into, we've got the first six months, we've set up some pilot activity that we then want to get into, what do the next twelve months mean? So certainly, the kind of specific towns that we mentioned will be at the heart of that.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Haig.
Thank you, Chairman. On page ninety, if you look in the left-hand column under D, it's got consideration to be given to each county councillor receiving a three thousand pound budget to support local activities. Then in the next column, it talks about a pilot scheme where the pot of funding will be combined, will be a combined pot rather than individual allocations. So are those two things still under consideration, one or the other? Or will the, will the initial funding pot be used and then rolled out if it's considered satisfactory to all councillors? Thank you, Chairman.
I'll pick that one up. I think where we are in the annual financial cycle, that's just something we're looking at at the moment in terms of what funds can be made available. Obviously, this report took forward the recommendations from the panel in April of last year, so we didn't have any budget allocated at that point, but we are exploring opportunities now. So it'll be one for us to come back to you with when we're back in six months, twelve months' time, whenever committee would like to see us again. Sorry, I can't give you more detail on that one.
Thank you for that answer. I'm looking around the room. Are there any further comments or questions from members? I am seeing none. I think my only comment would be that we've talked very much about the economic vibrancy and the importance of this to our towns. But I think councillor Cook, you mentioned the social aspect of this, and we should remember that an economically vibrant town is really important to have a vibrant community, and the two very much go together. So I think the importance of this project is very, very significant. And I think you can take it that the committee is very pleased to see the progress which has been made so far. Right, moving to the formal proposal, I move that the report be endorsed and that the committee's satisfaction be recorded in relation to the report and updates presented, as well as to the activity undertaken to date, to realise the objectives of this review. And secondly, I ask that a further update be shared with the committee in the next council term. Is there any dissent from that? I am seeing none. In that case, that matter is agreed. It is now eleven twenty-five, so I'm going to ask members whether they wish to proceed or whether they wish us to take a ten-minute comfort break. Anybody needing a ten-minute comfort break? The answer to that is no.
I'd quite happily have a ten-minute.
In that case, we do have a vote for a comfort break. And one vote for a comfort break is a casting vote for a comfort break. So we will take a ten-minute recess, and we will come back at twenty-five, too. Thank you very much for your patience, ladies and gentlemen. We resume the meeting at eleven thirty-eight. We now move to item eight on the agenda, the camper van and motorhome tourism in Lincolnshire working group update. And the next report is on pages ninety-five to one hundred and two of the agenda pack and the report updates on the activities of the caravan and camper van and motorhome working group, which was established to explore the motorhome market, assess Lincolnshire's position, identify opportunities and challenges and recommend short, medium and long-term strategies. The actions before us this morning are to review and comment on the current outcomes of the working group and to endorse the proposed short, medium and long-term outputs. The report is going to be presented by Justin Brown, the Assistant Director for Growth, Hayley Toyn, Growth Manager of the Visitor Economy. They are in the chamber and I believe we also have Mary Powell, Place and Investment Manager with us online. So Justin and Hayley, over to you. Hayley, good morning.
Morning, morning everyone. To very briefly recap, the motorhome working group was set up to explore the motorhome market, review our position in Lincolnshire, look at opportunities and issues and recommend a strategy and outcomes in the short, medium and long term. The report submitted explores a variety of market data available specifically for the motorhome and camper van market and points towards a sizeable market, growing year on year and stimulated considerably by consumer changes in behaviour following the pandemic and rise in staycations, flexible working patterns and non-serviced accommodation, et cetera. However, although the market data might be quantifiable, the report and working group also seek to identify and qualify real concerns around motorhome usage in the county. These cover a whole raft of issues, including antisocial behaviour, including waste disposal and dumping, including black waste and late night large gatherings, and also highways and parking management, narrow lanes not designed to take large vehicles, gateway overnight stays, parking barrier vandalism and bay blocking. Dealing with these issues has proved problematic for our staff and contractors who have been subjected to unacceptable behaviour and treatment. In compiling the overview, we've explored a variety of sources and this work is ongoing, both anecdotal and data-driven. We've also looked destinations elsewhere in the UK and reviewed their policies and procedures, as well as continuing to consult with our district authority colleagues. What is clear is that this is a challenge that many areas are facing. It's not peculiar to Lincolnshire and that processes are evolving, various trial schemes are taking place and there is no quick solution. Broadly speaking, there are two key groups of product users or visitors that this subject addresses and therein lies our challenge. The first is the responsible motorhome user, keen to explore the county, our hero products of nature, coast and the outdoors, on the whole responsible, respectful and looking for product knowledge to inform and add value to their stay. The second, however, is our challenge. Those who believe in the right of free camping off-grid, have little or no provision for waste disposal, are happy to park and stay wherever they may find space. These product users are generally not holidaymakers, do not contribute to traditional visitor economics and are pursuing a low-cost lifestyle, also known as van lifers. The report recommends a phased approach to managing both of these product users in the short, medium and long term. Encouraging Group A via positive messaging, managing the customer journey, both literally on the roads and through suggested product and itinerary development, and managing Group B through continued pragmatic and appropriate enforcement. In the short term, the primary mechanism would be the use of visitlincolnshire.com and our associated channels to communicate permitted and recommended product areas for motorhome visitors. For example, flagging overnight stay areas and parking places whilst also pulling through messaging on taking care of Lincolnshire and the sustainable tourism mantra of do no harm. We can pull through features onto our homepage, create linked content in places that we know are highly visible, for example, the coast path and the walking area of the website, and also flag motorhome benefits on individual business listings. We can resource this within the team and therefore actions such as this are relatively straightforward and resource light. In conjunction with this, short-term actions include persevering with visible enforcement at pinch points of unpermitted behaviours, namely overnight stays in restricted spaces and car parks under LCC remit. This includes wardens, ticketing and maintaining our signage clearly stating restrictions. The medium-term strategy proposes further product development through our tourism channels and enabling this with practical, straightforward business support in the form of a toolkit resource. This is a tried and tested format and especially alongside one-to-one business support to bring the toolkits to life is known to be useful to our visitor economy businesses. We currently have coast path experience and green hospitality toolkits in our suite of business support. They set out the markets, identify opportunities and scope out potential product development to harness these opportunities. We currently have committed all budget for the remainder of the financial year, so resourcing this option would fall to twenty-five, twenty-six, which also aligns to this being a medium-term output and also this market being particularly suited to shoulder season. The recommendation is that we evaluate the success of these strategies and therefore demand for the product, set KPIs for website metrics and business engagement and monitor visitor behaviour in restricted areas before we address longer-term issues and commit resource to infrastructure development, which might include, for example, public waste points, as there are currently none in the county, and increased provision for dedicated parking bays, et cetera. I would like to invite members to review the research and recommendations and endorse our strategic direction for motorhome users visiting Lincolnshire for recreational purposes. I'd welcome any questions and councillor Fleetwood, thank you for your contribution to the working group also, and I'd welcome your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed for that. Summary, councillor Higgs, you're first up.
Thank you, chairman. At present, do we have anything on our website for tourism and travelling in Lincolnshire that we try and steer motorhomes and camper vans away for the areas that we don't want them to dump rubbish where there's no facilities? And do we encourage, do we currently encourage them to visit areas that we can cater for them? Thank you.
Thank you. That's, we have pockets of information about motorhome usage and that's generally on our individual business listings, but we're recommending that we sort of consolidate that and also add to it with exactly that sort of putting recommended product on there for motorhome users to, to sort of steer them towards that content really. So there are, there are pockets of it, but there's nothing consolidated at the moment and that's what we would hope that phase one of this, that these outputs would be.
We have online councillor Vernon, who I think was actually a member of the working group. Councillor Vernon, you want to come in now?
Thank you, chairman, and thank you for your indulgence in allowing me to speak remotely. It was really interesting to be part of this working group and I think one of the biggest things to me was it was about making the most of what makes Lincolnshire unique and we are so unique. Beaches, coastline, beautiful vibrant market towns, university, the world, cycle routes, I could go on and on and on, but I doubt very much that counties have as much to offer as us. What is important, I think, and which came up within the working group, was to recognise how significant this part of the visitor economy can be to the county. But we also have to recognise, which you've just touched on, that whilst enhancing, we also have a duty to protect what is there and what gives us that unique charm. I was really saddened to hear in your report that contractors and staff have been subject to abuse whilst sort of taking on roles. And I think visible enforcement is absolutely key and it seems a clear case to me of the few spoiling it for the many who would actually sort of behave in the appropriate way. But yeah, it's been really enjoyable and sort of really valid to be part of this. So thank you for inviting me to join you.
Well, thank you councillor Vernon and thanks to all the members of the working group and the staff who, who, who worked on it. That point that you touched on and councillor Vernon made, I don't want to use a phrase like throwing up the baby with the bathwater, but whilst there is a negative side to this, I think we're aware that it is a very, very significant positive potential in terms of the visitor economy. How is, how do we go about getting that balance right and making sure that we can encourage the right people whilst not getting overwhelmed by, I don't want to say the wrong people, but by people who do not use our county as we would wish it to be used?
I think it's very much about the positive messaging and that we address that in all of our channels. Currently, there's not a great deal out of there that's Lincolnshire-specific on motorhomes. So if we can manage that aspect and that positive messaging, managing the customer or the visitor journey, both absolutely physically in directing them to specific places where they can enjoy, but also managing them through itineraries and the whole sort of theme of looking after Lincolnshire and the countryside code and that whole aspect, I think there's lots there that we can do to really reinforce the positive messaging whilst not taking away from the fact that there are those other elements that we need to be aware of. But I think you're absolutely right, it's not, we can't not look at the opportunity and the economic gain of welcoming those visitors because there are another element that we need to be aware of at the same time.
Thank you for that. Vice-chairman, councillor Griggs.
Thank you very much. Hayley, you've covered a lot of what I was going to talk about, so I'll frame it slightly differently. The report says there's currently four hundred thousand motorhomes in the UK with ninety-one per cent of owners aged over forty and eighty-two per cent using their vehicles all year round. That equates to approximately two hundred and ninety-five thousand motorhomes constantly up and down the roads of the UK. I know very little about motorhomes. I know very little about motorhoming, so I thought I'll Google wherever I can stay in Lincolnshire. And nothing comes up other than specific camper vaning websites for about four pages and we don't appear on the search list at all. I then Googled, visit Lincolnshire motorhomes, camper vans, to see if anything came up and still nothing comes up. Now, if each of those people spend approximately £47 per night, that's 13.9 million pounds a year, a year, sorry, a night for each of those motorhomes that are used regularly, whatever that is. Councillor Vernon spoke about the fact that we have so many unique gems in Lincolnshire. And I think we're really lucky in the fact we've got so many small places off the beaten track that people just don't know about. So I don't know how we would go about it and where we would tabulate that information, but potentially a recommended route around Lincolnshire, explore Lincolnshire's hidden gems or whatnot. That way we could highlight where people could park, what the facilities are that are available, direct them to where we want them to stay. I would envisage if you had a motorhome, the first thing you'll do is go on the internet and find out where you can abandon it and go get some food, I would assume. So I think, yeah, just having a quick glance at the internet, potentially that's a route we could definitely go down. In terms of resourcing that, would that be possible within our current available resources? Officer time, local knowledge and expertise? Would we do that in partnership with others? If you could give me your thoughts.
Thank you. Absolutely. I think in terms of that, identifying the secondary spend that's associated with motorhome visitors is absolutely key and pointing them towards places where they can eat and drink and go out for a day and et cetera, et cetera. So adding value to their stay is absolutely critical. In terms of what we currently have, we have the bones of it there. We've just never had the strategic direction to purposely target motor homers. But in terms of the infrastructure within Visit Lincolnshire, for example, we have business listings that we're able to highlight if they are dog-friendly or if they have green credentials. Or so there's a, there's a way that we can highlight within those individual business listings certain benefits. So that's a potential that we could add a, if you like, a motorhome widget to that functionality there. There are various other ways that we've explored that we can increase our SEO as well on motorhome activity on the website. So there's, there's lots of ways that we can add that nuance, if you like, and that element of being attractive to motorhome users within our current ways of working. That might be blog posts, that might be business listings, that might be product itineraries. And that's something that I work on specifically. So pulling together a day's worth of activity for a motorhome user and directing them around the county, for example. So we currently, yeah, we have that resource at that level at the moment.
Thank you very much. Councillor Fleetwood.
Thank you, chairman. I wasn't going to speak to this, but I think I'm going to have a go now. We've talked about motor homers, caravans. And I think that we need to respect the fact that 99.5% of the people with motorhomes, caravans do so in a responsible way in Lincolnshire. So I don't think we should tarnish them with a brush, that's saying that we need to become haters of such people. I look at people and yes, there are people in category B who do pull up into laybys here and there. But in general, they do take their rubbish or whatever with them and they do dispose of their chemical waste in a suitable way. But what's come, what I've noticed in the last few weeks is I've spent quite a bit of time on various roads. And if you drive around the Ring Road or the A158 and you have a look at the traffic queues in September, now into October, you'll notice the caravans have all gone, but you'll still see that there are motorhomes there. And if you look at the average profile of the person driving those vehicles, they're all people that are spending the children's inheritance. They're all people of a certain age group. I don't know if they are with pensions or not, with not, but I don't think they're looking to claim their winter fuel allowance at home. I think they're out there enjoying themselves and getting on and doing whatever. And I think we also need to respect the fact that motorhomes, although we don't have something specific, I think a lot of those people are looking towards caravan sites or mobile caravan sites or camping sites that are still open, or indeed other businesses. And to quote one business, Bateman's over at Waynefleet. If you want to go to Bateman's and do a brewery tour, you can stay on their caravan site and you can park there. So some companies will actively promote the fact that you can stay there. And what a good place to go to, go and slumber in the bottom of Bateman's windmill after a little brewery tour and not have to drive away again. So let's be positive about it.
And I think, I think that just underlines, doesn't it? The point that I seem to remember was discussed when this project actually began in this chamber and in this committee, where we talked about the importance of bringing forward information about the private sector providers, because obviously we're not going to go into the business of providing. So that people understand where they can go, that we provide channels to guide them to the right place. And Bateman's is a smashing example of that. There will be others around the county. And I think if through this project we can do anything to bring those sources of information together, councillor Fleetwood, you're absolutely right. You know, there may be a few bad apples in any barrel you choose, but most of the people who are driving motorhomes are highly responsible. They are visitors as well as tourists and we want to encourage them and provide for them. And providing for them, I think, is the key thing. If we can get them in touch with the right places to go so they can, they can park up safely, they could, they can access services safely, they can go out to a local village pub and what have you, then they're making the contribution and they are having the holiday they want and they will come back. Are there any further speakers from the floor? Seeing none, I thank everyone for your questions and comments. And I particularly thank the officers for the hard work that have been, that they have put in to helping the working group and preparing the report. So I move that the committee endorses the report and the proposed outputs identified and ask that our satisfaction be recorded on the thoroughness and detail of the report. Does anyone dissent from that? I am seeing no dissent at all. Therefore, that matter is agreed. Thank you very much and thank you for all the work that went into it. We move on to item nine on the agenda, which is the Agriculture Scrutiny Review Monitoring Update of Action Plan. This report can be found on pages 103 to 146 of the Agenda pack. And the report provides a monitoring update on the recommendations of the 2022-2023 Scrutiny Panel B Review of the Agriculture Sector in Greater Lincolnshire. And it focuses on key priorities such as policy, leadership, skills, technology, labour shortages, mental health, the Green Master Plan and of course agricultural services. Progress has been made with some actions completed and others ongoing. And an internal officers group has been established to coordinate those efforts. And an officer from the Infrastructure Investment Service is dedicated to supporting the agricultural sector and overseeing the action plan. The actions before us this morning are, one, to review and comment on the progress made on implementing the recommendations from the agriculture sector review. And two, in the context of moving to the business as usual phase, to agree that going forward, offices will report on progress with the agriculture and horticulture sector through the council's normal performance management protocols. So the report is going to be presented by Vanessa Strange, Head of Infrastructure Investment, and Nicola Radford, Senior Commissioning Officer for Growth. Over to you both.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to update you on the progress of the agricultural and horticulture action plan. I'll just run through a few of the key headlines from the action plan that we've delivered in the last six months.
Nicola, before you go on, could you pull the microphone a bit closer? We're not, we're not quite.
Is that better?
That's very much better, thank you.
So yeah, one of the key recommendations from the action plan was the establishment of the Greater Lincolnshire Forum for Agricultural and Horticulture, which is now being established. And that's now being chaired by Matthew Riddington from Decoy Farm and Savills. And the vice-chair is Tammy Doughty from the Chamber and the Forum for Fresh Produce. The members are listed in the appendices of the report, but there's been a focus mainly around the younger generations and succession farming. And we've got a very good mix of farmers and growers as members of that. The forum has met twice so far. The current focus has been on the new government policy in the sector and how Lincolnshire, Greater Lincolnshire's voice can be heard and fed into DEFRA and the government going forward. And we had a debate on that and the policy recommendations at the last meeting. The next meeting in January is focusing on water management, which is key obviously to the sector, both with too much and too little water. And we've got members of the Environment Agency, the Internal Dairy Drainage Board and Anglia Water attending that one. And moving forward on the agenda, we've got soil management and skills and apprenticeships. So members are very keen on taking those areas forward in the interim. As you mentioned, we've got an internal officer working group that's been established as the action plan is very much across the whole of the county, councils, departments and teams. And that meets quarterly to make sure that we can collaborate together and that all our work is done in a coordinated fashion and we can report back to members and officers in a timely manner. Through the scrutiny process, we had discussions with public health. And one of the issues was raised was around mental health with farmers. And public health have funded towards two mental health nurses through the Lincolnshire Rural Services Network. And that's been very well received. And the LRSN would like us to thank members for that recommendation and the funding towards that. We've also had some feedback on trading standards and how well they've been working with farmers during the current Blue Turn outbreak through their up-to-date information and their support that way. We've had some very interesting discussions around collaboration across various schools at the university who are looking to work into the agricultural sector, specifically around health. And we're looking to put a project together around nutrition, isolation, social isolation, nutrition and a package together to look at farms as a whole of how they're adapting and how their health is affected. And one of the areas that we're looking at is around motion capture, which is how farmers get in and out of farm machinery and how that can be adapted to look at having later hit replacements and those sort of things. Is there a way of avoiding those going forward? We're working with other teams on a research project on carbon capture and also with the university on cold storage monitoring and how different temperatures are working and how you monitor cold storage going forward. We've got a campaign at the county council, which is Keep Lincolnshire Growing. We've got a website now that's got all the, all the resources that the county council provides in one place so that people who are interested in the sector can go to one place on the county council site to get that access and information. And also we've got some videos on there, which we've had the previous Agricultural Champions. We've now launched some Horticultural Champions. And those videos have been rolled out, being used at Lincolnshire Showground and in the colleges and universities. The next steps moving forward with the action plan are, again, we said about looking with the university around the research. We're looking to engage with DEFRA through the forum, through their Rural Farming Network, which is national partnership. And we're looking to a collaboration project in with Lath Cattle Market on younger farmers and the young farmer's side of things around their mental health and their future skills and training side of things. And that's where we are with that. So if I've got any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Fleetwood.
Yes, looking at the report and Nicola's commented about mental health of farmers. And I'm really pleased that there's something in here. Farming is now a very lonely profession. Years ago, you would have camaraderie, you'd have everybody mucking in at the harvest and you'd have lots and lots of people doing bits and pieces. But now the life of a farmer is quite lonely. On a lot of farms, you need a couple of thousand acres to exist. And you've got a very large piece of machinery around you, which does an awful lot of activity. But it's also probably in, on HP or on some sort of a loan to the bank. And the farmers are potentially sitting in their machinery stressing about how they make the payments, particularly when the weather is so variable and the output of their crops is an issue. I've lost some friends through mental health issues in farming. And I'm really, really pleased that this is within the report because I just can't emphasise it enough, that of the, out of all the topics here, mental health is so, so important to the farming community. So thank you, Nicola, thank you for putting it in.
I think we would all endorse that. And you can't really hug a farmer because he's sitting inside his tractor, as you say, on a lonely field. But certainly I'm sure the wish of this committee would be that every farmer and farm worker knows just how valued they are. Not purely in pure economic terms, but they provide quite literally the food on our plates. And in this county, they do it enormously well. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, chairman, and I echo those comments. And actually, I was speaking at Conservative Party Conference recently about farming because actually for us in Lincolnshire, we are, you know, the heart of agriculture. You know, we actually contribute, I think it's £2 billion into the UK GDP in terms of our farming output. But just on the report, so in terms of sort of future-proofing agriculture, how does the review incorporate future agricultural challenges such as climate change, land degradation and biodiversity loss? And are there plans for promoting more sustainable agricultural practices that balance productivity with ecological preservation? That's my first question.
There's been a lot of that discussion through the forum moving forward around sort of land use and the sustainability. So it will be something that we'll be looking at going forward with the forum and working through the DEFRA network as well. So we'll collaborate that and include that into the future of the action plan.
Then I presume that will come back to us here at some point for us to consider.
Yep.
And then just finally, obviously we were talking about farmers and obviously we know we have quite an aging farming population, particularly across Lincolnshire. So what strategies are being explored to support young farmers? And also introducing more innovative technologies into the sector as well?
The forum that we've got have got, the majority of the farmers are under the age of 40 and we're looking at the succession of the farming sector. And we've got female and male split across there. And one of their areas is around that succession side of things and planning and how they introduce new technologies into their businesses. So we're very much looking at sort of that future-proofing the sector in the Greater Lincolnshire area by having those younger generations on the sector, on the forum, sorry. We're also looking at, and we had a discussion with at the last meeting around apprenticeships and introducing future generations and people who aren't normally in the sector into the agricultural sector and how there's different roles and different avenues into that sort of career pathway. And that's what we've got through the videos that are out being promoted at the moment. And one of those is around the technology. But it's also, you don't just need technology, you do need the boots in the farm as well. So it's having all those different entry levels that people can access. So that's something they're very keen on exploring and especially around apprenticeships and seasonality because they only need the apprentices at a certain time of the year, but they've still got to go to college. So how could they look at having them in chunks? So you can have them for six months on the, in the farm when they've got harvest and they're busy. And then six months can go to college and that's not there at the moment, but that's something they want to explore moving forward.
Yes, I think, before I move to the next councillor, it just is worth remembering that, that yes, there are people who are vulnerable in farming and they need our care. But also there's a huge amount of energy amongst young, young farmers. I mean, there's a group in my division, the Hampstead Young Farmers Group, which do great works in terms of social events, but also in terms of charitable contributions. If we can tap into those networks, then we have some ready-made networks that we can provide help and assistance and work through. Because there is so much energy and so many good things going on within the people who are, who form agriculture in our county. Next is councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As you know, I chaired this particular panel and it's always encouraging to see that all our time and effort is produced worthwhile results, that these are not reports that gather dust and stored on a shelf somewhere. These updates, this committee are so useful to show that we are making progress. What we've recommended are being delivered. Again, I thank the officers for that time and effort on that panel. Also now working towards the delivery of those results. Also encouraging to hear the support by our colleagues on this committee here today. And when councillor Fleetwood spoke about the mental health concerns, it also reveals that it was a correct decision to put so much focus on that at that time. Particularly as, as we know, we was coming out of Covid, there was so much pressure on that. And as you said, Mr Chairman, we do value this sector of our economy. And the government has changed. We need to remind this government to value this sector. this sector. I'm yeah, doing that. We've raised the profile of this industry recently through various aspects of the work we do, and also various planning issues. Also particularly pleased we are putting some focus on the next generation, the future of farming, the next generation. Because as you said, we do, this does support, feed the nation, reduce the need to import food, to support Buy, Link and Share, Grow, Link and Share, support our economy. And one of the major recommendations was the, to form the Agriculture and Horticultural Forum. So just one comment on that. Is the membership across the county? Because it's important that membership, all voices from across this large county are heard, and the different sectors in that wide industry, horticulture as well as agriculture. So hopefully we are continuing to monitor the membership of our committee, that all aspects of the sector and geographically are represented on that forum. Thank you.
Yes, we've got members from the Greater Lincolnshire area, so from Scunthorpe all the way down to Baston near Peterborough. And they have got different sectors. We've got arable and we've got horticultural growers and pig farmers and chicken farmers. So yeah, there's a good mix across the whole of the Greater Lincolnshire area. And we have asked members if there are people missing. So we have added to them from the first forum meeting to make sure we did get that cross sector and the geographic split across Greater Lincolnshire.
Just a quick question for myself, but a fairly fundamental one. I've been aware through, through my work really of the problem of labour for farming enterprises, really for the last 10 or 15 years that I've been doing the things that I do. There were labour shortages before Brexit, there were labour shortages after Brexit perhaps intensified. There is a programme which is heavily used, particularly over in the east of the county, by people involved in vegetable production for temporary workers who come in on a six month visa from outside the country. So my question really is, how can we in this council help address the issue of labour shortages in the sector? Have we made any progress on skills development and the sustainability, if it is sustainable, of the workforce that we've got?
I thought Justin was going to answer then, sorry. The agriculture advisor through the Business Growth Hub has been doing some work around the labour shortages. And he's been working with various farms across the county, gathering that information, particularly around sort of accommodation issues and how the labour force can be accommodated in those sides of things. But as I say, we are looking at the career progression and trying to attract younger generations into the sector. But at the moment, we haven't progressed that, but we can look at that wider on the action plan moving forward.
Justin.
Yeah, thank you. Remember that in moving ahead with devolution, we will be accessing the commissioning of the adult education budget and also a significant revenue and capital budget. And in the plans, we intend to invest in training and development for those sectors that are really, really important to the community. So I would see when the Merrill Investment Fund opens in May next year, the opportunity for Nicola to put a foot on the gas in terms of investing in that. And I did wonder, and Kiara may shoot me for saying this, but I did wonder whether, given your interest in agricultural innovation, agricultural workforce and so on, that before the next elections, we maybe make a visit to somewhere like Bishop Burton Agricultural College and look at what is being really taught on the ground?
I'm sure Kiara will not be reaching for her gun. Yes, I think that would be an excellent suggestion from the chair, and I'm not seeing any dissent from members. Because a lot of the issues we have at the moment, we are dealing basically with patches. When we're looking at bringing people in, good people who work very hard from outside the country, they do their temporary visas. But in the long term, we really need to generate a domestic workforce of young people based in this county, from this county. And nobody is pretending that agricultural work is not really tough. And it is not fully mechanised, even though this council has, you know, invested very heavily in encouraging automation where it is possible. It can be hard work, it can be tough work, and you're not always under a sunny sky, you're sometimes out there in liquid mud trying to get, it really can be very tough. But we have to have, in the long term, a sustainable domestically based workforce. And I think the training opportunities of the Merrill administration, that is something which we should keep our eye on. And yes, let's indeed do an appropriate site visit and let's try and get that in within the term of this council. Are there any further speakers from the floor? The vice chairman?
Yeah, it's only a slight point, as the chairman stole all of my thunder, most of my questions. My stepson was really lucky in that he got a job working on a farm in Freeston, and since then has gained qualifications in spraying, tractor driving, and all sorts of other bits of paper that I don't know what he does, but he spends a lot of time at work and he absolutely loves his job. We, for those of you who don't know, I work at the college and we had an open evening last Thursday. And so obviously, we've got year 11 learners coming in. And I appreciate what Justin says about the adult learning grant. Yeah, it's great to retrain, but I think the issue is, is that 15 year olds come into me, oh, what do you want to do when you grow up? I mean, I barely know what I want to do when I grow up. So how we expect a 15 year old to know is beyond me. And I think, yeah, a lot more work needs to be done to highlight the positives of agricultural work. Yeah, I think most people either see it as you're working as a flower picker or, you know, on the back of a planter, and it's not the most glamorous of jobs. And they don't realise the opportunity that follows on from that if you're hardworking and dedicating. And I know in the county, we've got some really good agricultural colleges, but like, obviously, I work at Boston College, we don't teach any agricultural courses. But we do offer, you know, skill sets that are relevant to that workforce, even if it's not the specific practical application of that job. So I think more work needs to be done, most definitely, on the careers and framing of the careers to provide advice and guidance to young people who aren't already involved in farming. Yeah, it's great, we've got the young farming networks, but generally, those people are aware of the requirements and opportunities of farming. It's the people who aren't currently engaged in agriculture at all that we need to sort of sell it to as a career option, not as a, oh, this job will tide you over until you find something better. So I don't necessarily know what the solution to that is. But yeah, liaising with educational providers to provide more advice and guidance. Yeah, myself, I don't know enough about it to advise young people of where to go to get these opportunities. So I think more work could be done in that direction.
Thank you very much for that. councillor Fleetwood.
Just as a small extension to that, in this world of bureaucracy we live in, it comes to a point where if you haven't got a piece of paper certificate to do something, you're not allowed to do it. And if it goes wrong, the Health and Safety Executive will choke you around and dam you from here to kingdom come. So do we, is there an opportunity for us to actually start trying to promote something with regard to training schemes for people to get tickets, as they're commonly called, pieces of paper, so that they can do various functions? Somebody can start off with a teleporter ticket or a 360 excavator certificate. And I've seen this happen through different organisations. But I actually sit on a drainage board or two. And what we tend to see on a drainage board is that people with excavators will come with a qualification, a ticket, which they've gained somewhere, might have been through a farm, might have been through a college. But then you'll take them on at a drainage board. And then the next thing you know, is you're paying them X amount of pounds per hour. But that ticket will then also qualify them in the construction industry. So then when they move forward and look for jobs within the construction industry, you find they're being headhunted for probably twice or more the hourly rate payable. So they've got a migration, a career forwards. So is there any way we can actually facilitate somehow, promote some way of getting these training schemes together? I know there are some external operators who will do chainsaw courses or whatever. But in the bigger scheme of things, just by taking into account what councillor Griggs is saying, is there some way we can actually move forwards with that type of certification?
Any comments from our offices? I appreciate that it might, in training terms, be perhaps a slightly different team, but can we make any progress?
The, when it comes to things like the tickets, it's often very much free market. The job for us though is to convene the right people around the table. So when the forum has its session on employment and skills, we'll go down three or four different lines of inquiry and we'll make that one of them. But it's a market which is very private sector led. And so it's difficult for us to engage because we're not allowed to. So we'll need to think about convening rather than influencing and shaping, but definitely something to consider.
Thank you very much for that. I'm not seeing any further comments from the floor. So we'll conclude that part of the debate here. But I think the message from this committee and this council is that our agricultural sector and everybody who works in it is very highly valued indeed. We have a proposal before us, which is that I move that the committee endorse the report and ask that our satisfaction be recorded in relation to the progress made against the delivery of the report's recommendations. And I move that further updates be shared with this committee in the new council term. Does anyone dissent from that? No one is dissenting. In that case, that matter is agreed. That was item nine. We now move to item 10 on the agenda, which is the Thedallthorpe Geological Disposal Facility Working Group, six monthly update. This report can be found on pages 147 to 154 of the agenda pack. The paper provides an update on the geological disposal facility, known as G D F, proposals for Thedallthorpe, highlighting four key developments, progress in community engagement in Mabelthorpe, Thedallthorpe and Witherne, work on a hosting agreement and significant investment for Thedallthorpe, the release of Nuclear Waste Services G D F Report 2024, and visioning through the West Burton STEP programme to create the Trent Clean Energy Supercluster. As to our actions, the committee is invited to consider and comment on the contents of this report, which is going to be presented right now by Justin Brown, the Assistant Director of Growth. Before we turn to Justin, councillor Austin is raising her hand.
Thank you, chairman. Sorry, can I say something? Am I the only member of this committee who received an invitation? Or is it because I'm on the coastal cluster for an event which actually I've declined because I've come here, but would be at Thedall, concerning this very matter, put on by the, I can't think what their name is now, the people who are doing this, consulting on the Thedallthorpe disposal. But, and it was at Mabelthorpe. But it was an invitation that was, well, I think, sort of to a talk, an exhibition and lunch, which I'm not, I have declined. But I have to go now because of other reasons, I'm sorry. But I did communicate by email with, I think in the end, Andy Gutherson, and said, can we have a visit to this? And it was too short notice to get it for this meeting. But I hope that something will be forthcoming. And just with that, in my, you know, just making that point before I leave, and I'm sorry, it has to be so last minute, but it was only sort of last week that I got the invitation.
Not to worry. Thank you for your contribution to the meeting so far, and we'll pick that point up in due course. Justin, perhaps in your remarks you'd just like to address, I'm assuming that the nuclear waste disposal people have a fairly complex programme of engagement. But if you can pick that up one, thank you very much. And introduce the report.
Yeah, chairman, thank you. I'm actually going to go through the four points in summary in reverse order. So you'll be aware of the fusion plant, which is being proposed for West Burton, just over in Nottinghamshire. And you'll be aware that that is one of the biggest pieces of infrastructure in the country. And that the development of that is going ahead, looking at community impact, community benefit, business sector, supply chain, infrastructure, environment, et cetera. The programme is being sponsored by the UK Atomic Energy Agency and one of its offshoots. And you and I, chairman, have spoken previously about whether this committee may find it useful to receive a presentation on the detail of that. But what's happened with it is, is there is a piece of visioning work gone on, which has identified the type of infrastructure, the type of business opportunities that there are. And I wanted to start with that, because almost that feels like if the community chooses a geological disposal facility in Thedallthorpe or in that area, then essentially, you're going to see a similar piece of visioning and strategy work taking place in that area. So what's happening with fusion is of interest, both from an economic and infrastructure point of view to the west of the county, but also as a general position in terms of how things might be taken forward, should a geological disposal facility take place. Nuclear Waste Services, who are leading on the geological disposal facility, are, as you say, undertaking a range of engagement activity. And the point Mrs Austin was covering is that there is a, an exhibition which opens in four minutes' time over in Boston, and is on every afternoon for the next two weeks. We sent a invitation to every member in the council. I'm aware you all have lots and lots of emails, but somewhere in your inbox is, is an invitation to that event. And if you fancy a coffee, I'm going next Tuesday afternoon and we'll buy them. But certainly, the reason that we think it was important to send it out to all members was that you can read a report about something, but until you've actually immersed and seen and understood things like the scale of protection that there will be around the caskets and things like that, then you don't necessarily get a sense of how it's going to operate. So I would encourage people to attend that. Most important thing for us is that whilst we remain absolutely neutral, if the community choose to go ahead with this facility, then the prospect of significant additional infrastructure comes into play. And that is a lot of money and a lot of infrastructure. It will support part of the much needed flood defences, it will support road and rail access, it'll support investment in tourism, environment, skills, business, et cetera. So clearly, we are neutral, clearly the decision is with the community. But one of the things that we want to do is to make sure that the government, whichever government is in place, whenever decisions are made and things happen, remain committed to delivering on that significant additional infrastructure. And therefore, we're proposing to enter into a hosting agreement with government. It's what other parts of the world have done. And it creates a commitment between government and a locality that the investment will take place. And I think we all know that if a major development were to take place on the coast, then we would need significant infrastructure to access it, to benefit from it, and to alleviate any of the difficulties. And the final thing to say in the report is that the way of accessing that infrastructure is partly through engagement with the government, it's partly through having compelling business cases. That's very much a county council world. But it's also about creating a community vision, which shows that the people in the area have described what their future would look like. And it helps us then work out how to develop infrastructure that helps them with that vision of their future. And Mandy to my right is working very closely with the community group in the area to help to draw that out. So that's really the summary of where we've been over the last six months, chairman. Definitely worth learning from what's happening at West Burton. If people are available to attend the exhibition, it is one of many that will take place into the future, but it would be worth, worth you visiting. And to reassure you, we're looking at a hosting agreement in order to generate government's commitment into finance on the investment. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. I'll kick this one off and start rather than on the coast. I'll kick this one off and start, rather than on the coast, but with West Burton. Members are aware that I went down, along with officers, and saw the team who are preparing that STEP scheme at Cullum, which is the headquarters of the United Kingdom Atomic Energy Authority. I think we will try and arrange for that team to make a presentation to this committee, probably in January or February of the coming year, because I think the potential is so important that all members should be aware of it. The thing that absolutely struck me was that this is not just about building a half-scale fusion reactor, important though that is, it's about creating an industry, and therefore the economic potential and the skills potential for our county, as well as other areas surrounding that site, are absolutely enormous, because as Justin has said, this will be a tannic piece of investment, one of the biggest single pieces of investment in the United Kingdom in the next probably couple of decades. On that subject, can I ask, thinking of that, but also thinking of the potential of Theddlethorpe, how do we ensure, particularly in terms of skills, that we have synergies with colleges such as the vice chairmans, with universities such as Lincoln University, to try and embed not only in our existing engineering companies, who hopefully will take part in that, but also create a skill set which provides an ongoing benefit for our county?
So a lot of this is about our convening power, and in terms of the West Burton work, there was a risk that training and development activity would be a natural extension of what you and I saw in Oxfordshire, which would have missed out the quality of training and education that is available locally. So we did some work with UK AEA and their various arms-length bodies to encourage them to understand, communicate with, and to really engage with training providers in a three-quarters of an hour radius of West Burton. That's happened. There are a series of groups now established, University of Lincoln, Lincoln College, Newark College, Basit Law College, et cetera, all around that table. In terms of anything that might happen in eastern Lincolnshire, then what we are looking at is starting with a skills roundtable with Nuclear Waste Services very shortly. They produced a skill and employment analysis three or four years ago. We've asked them to update it, and we've asked them to update it particularly in the context of increased artificial intelligence and increased automation. You know, that's happening quickly, and a report written in 2020 doesn't necessarily reflect the skills needs, even in 2024. So we're using our convening power in there. I wouldn't expect to be making many financial commitments for a initiative which is one of the biggest in the country, because they've got more money than we have, frankly. But if we can be the glue that brings people together, then I think that's a valuable role for us.
Excellent, thank you. And can I just ask a follow-on from that? As far as the decision-making progress on the waste site is concerned, what are the next steps in terms of that decision-making process over the next six months? This report is for the last six months. As far as the facility is concerned, and can we make sure, I'm sure we can, how will we make sure that transparency is going to be maintained through that process?
So as you'll be aware, councillor Hill sits on the community partnership for that group, and in the rules relating to geological disposal, the community partnership needs to gauge public opinion and to do its best, I think ensure is probably unfair, but do its best to give people in the community as much information as possible about the pros and the cons of nuclear waste and disposal thereof. So that particular partnership, which has started to meet in public and publish its minutes on its website, is working through how it will inform itself, how it will inform the community, and how it will monitor progress. And it has a meeting on Thursday where there's a paper about that subject, and it looks to sign it off on Thursday and then start implementing that. So things are in the public domain. That particular group, with democratic representation from the leaders of both Lincolnshire and East Lindsay councils on it, is the place where that information will be made available and monitored and scrutinised.
Thank you very much. From the floor, councillor Hague.
Thank you, Chairman. Do we have any idea what changes may happen after next May's mayoral election as far as this council's input is concerned?
So in terms of the geological disposal facility, I think the policy was probably written before devolution and mayors came into place. And off the top of my head, I do not believe that there is a requirement for the mayoral combined authority to be part of the community partnership. I also think, if you think about what the mayoral county combined authority will be about, it will be about attracting investment, leading on economic growth. The role of a county council is much, much broader than that, isn't it? And therefore, I believe that we will still be around the table and having the, what's called the RPLA, which is the primary local authority in the work. So I suspect very little in terms of this particular issue. I was going to mention in Forward Work Programme, if I may, that we're expecting a devolution white paper out of government sometime over the next six weeks, and it would probably make a lot of sense for us to bring an analysis of it to this group. It will hint at the sort of regeneration funding that people like councillor Taylor had asked about earlier, and it'll also hint at relationships between combined authorities, county councils, district councils, that you've just hinted at, councillor Hague. So it might be that we wrap that up in a paper when the devolution white paper comes out.
Thank you very much. Yes, that I think is a suggestion that we can all support on the committee. Do I have any other contributions from the floor? Councillor Fleetwood.
I'm just wondering, we've had a change of government fairly recently, and I don't know what the perspective will be. I know in West Lindsay, there is going to be potentially, well, there will be, an awful lot of solar panels coming our way, which are unwelcome, but I wonder quite what handle the government might have with regard to anything nuclear. Is there anything coming out yet?
I wonder the same. Still awaiting information on that. What I would say trend-wise is that geological disposal facilities are recognised in many countries across the world as the safest way of disposing of nuclear waste, and we already have nuclear waste. So whilst I haven't seen any government announcements on the subject, I'd be surprised if they were contrary to the current position.
Thank you very much for that. I'm looking around the room, I'm seeing no further hands raised. So thank you very much indeed for the written report and for those comments in the course of the meeting and for the answers provided. As far as the proposal is concerned, I move that the report be received, and I ask that our comments be captured, cascaded to relevant officers in support of their future actions. Does anyone dissent from that? Seeing no dissent, that matter is agreed. And just to repeat the point that Justin made and that you've had emails on, Nuclear Waste Services are hosting a large interactive event between the 15th and the 23rd of October at the Dunes Complex in Mablethorpe. The exhibition offers the chance to discover more about the geological disposal facility using interactive models, films, audio guides and displays. The event launches today with previews for local groups and organisations, businesses and schools taking place on the 16th to the 18th, and the event is fully open to the public from the 19th to the 23rd of October. So any public listening, make note of that, and scrutiny officers can provide more information to members. So that concludes that item. We move to the final item on the agenda, the Committee Work Programme. This item is on pages 155 to 160 of the Agenda Pack, and the item enables the committee to comment on the contents of its work programme, and will be presented by Kiara Hazianu. Our scrutiny officer, Kiara.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. So the work programme for this term has been now published as part of this agenda, and it has been rolled out and developed up to the meeting on the 25th of March 2025. I welcome all the contributions from today's meeting in terms of items to be considered for introduction into one of our agendas in the next coming months. And in addition, there is absolutely every faith in our ability to be able to organise those site visits that have been requested. There haven't been made any changes in terms of the document that has been published as part of your agendas packs so far, and I welcome any further updates from officers in terms of items that they are aware that will be coming into scrutiny in the coming months. This concludes my update to you, thank you.
Any comments from any of the members? Note, in that case, if we could note those additional items, there's a site visit mentioned, there was an additional report, which Justin mentioned, and an arrangement, an invitation, rather, to our friends at Cullum to join us in January or February. In that case, I move that we note the report, we thank the officer for it, and approve the existing work programme as detailed on pages 155 to 160, with those additional items which we have discussed. Anybody dissent from that? I'm seeing no dissent, that matter is agreed. And therefore, I come to the final item in my notes, which is the end of the meeting. We now conclude the business. Thank you, everybody who attended physically, thank you for everybody who has joined us online or indeed time-shifting and watching the video of this on our website. It is now 12:42, and I declare this meeting closed. Thank you very much, everyone.